Order of Commissioners. Anthony, we're all set?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Shackleton, if you would do the honors.
A delegance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, sorry. It looked like you were just chomping at the bit to get going, so.
I, you know, I'm just, I'm just ready.
All right.
You missed it. You gotta go and do it yourself.
All right. We're gonna give him a timeout.
Yeah.
Anyhow, Steve, we have roll call.
Commissioner Nepper.
Here.
Commissioner Lorenz.
Here.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Here.
Commissioner Trainer.
Here.
Chairman Martin.
Here. Next additions to leations to the agenda. Or will we accept it as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion for the approval of the county or of the Commission Agenda as presented. Have a second. Support and discussion. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Post, motion passes. Prove of County Minutes, regular meeting, March thirteenth, twenty twenty five, page one of your packet. Any discussion about that or shall we move on?
I move approval of those minutes.
Motion and support approval of the County Board of Minutes as presented of the meeting of March thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Aye, post, make the best. Correspondents receive, page ten of your packet.
I would move that the correspondence is acknowledged and forwarded as appropriate. Support.
And support. To take these correspondence and move them forward. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, aye. Close, motion passes. Seven on the agenda, public comments. Anyone who would like to speak? Yes, sir. Up, yeah, up here. I don't know. I haven't seen any of them with the red.
You don't need to be ready. Remember, the microphone is the disco ball.
No, but if you say it, I believe.
Okay.
Chairman, Commissioner. Appreciate Commissioner Trainer for inviting me here. I've asked for a letter of support for our project that we're very excited about. And I've spoken with Commissioner Nepper. And it's a very special project, we think, for the region and for the Great Lakes in general. What we're doing, are you guys aware of the project?
Is your or stone more?
Yeah, you got, there's two of them down there. I get them mixed up. Which one is this? This is on Drummond or?
Brian Gatesville.
Right, okay, guy, Gatesville.
Yeah, so it's, we would like to build a for-purpose port. There's, there's a two billion ton aggregate reserve on the site. And we intend to create fifty jobs when we're at our estimated capacity. That we're gonna mine each year, seventy million dollar investment. And at five billion tons a year, it's a four hundred year life span for the project. Will be the only US-owned aggregate company on the Great Lakes. The others are owned by foreign companies. And the uses of the port are fourfold. We're gonna process aggregates and load them out. And then we're gonna be a safety valve for the Sioux locks, should there be an environmental issue or catastrophic issue with the Sioux locks. We're building ship loaders where the loaded, where the closest port where we can transport products from above the locks and keep the economy going, should there be. Hopefully, that that'll never happen, but and then it'll be a public import and export dock. We've spoken with Commissioner Nepper about the potential of handling softwood and other wood products, including pelletizing, softwood. And we hope, in the best case scenario and scenario, that we can stabilize the softwood industry in the central and eastern UP. And I call it an industry, but it's really more of a culture, because these are jobs where the grandfather taught the father and the father taught the son. And when people leave to take jobs in Detroit or other places, sometimes they don't come back. And it's a lot of ups and downs in the industry, as you know. Then we're speaking with Corps of Engineers about being a dredged material disposal facility. Where we'll take dredge materials from the Saint Mary's River and reprocess them into usable aggregates for concrete and asphalt industries. And by doing that, there's a, there's a directive in the Corps of Engineers that seventy percent of the materials in their DMDS are recycled by twenty thirty. So we'd help them to achieve that. And the other thing that we can do is be a catalyst for the cleanup of different sites on the Saint Mary's River. Currently, it's really difficult to move contaminated dredgings through and about. We're building the port to be able to load up to thousand-foot vessels. And of course, you know, it's located on the second largest trade route on the Great Lakes. And we've got strong support from Detour Township, the vessel companies, and aggregate dock. There's a four foundations of our core vision, to preserve the maritime culture and industry, to retain and attract youth to the eastern UP. The average age of Detour Village is sixty-seven years old. And some of these villages are at risk of dying. And then to have a net positive impact on the environment. Now, that's a tough thing to do when, because mining is a land-intensive operation. However, we believe that the way that the port is built, and then we have products that can help to build fishing spawning beds on the Saint Mary's River. And we can be catalysts, working with folks like the Sioux Tribe and other community leaders to apply for.
Sir, I hate to interrupt, because this is all very good information, but we have a three-minute time limit.
Okay, I'm over. The last thing I'll just say, and thank you very much, as we're setting up a foundation. And five cents for every ton we put in that foundation called, it takes a village, Eastern UP Foundation. And working with regional leaders, including Mr. Trainer, on who would sit on that board and disperse that to help. Thank you for your time.
And at the end, we can, I'm sure there will be some questions and answers at the end of the meeting.
Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have another person who'd like to speak?
Nevis Island is having trouble logging in.
Say there was someone there earlier.
Yes, yeah.
Anthony, can you troubleshoot it off? Or is that what he's doing?
We've got something on there, yeah.
Yeah, there's people on, but they're just having trouble.
There was a issue on the posting, on the Zoom posting and the link, but the media ID is correct everywhere else in the document that was posted on the website.
I think they're checking right now.
Who is this that we see at the top?
Is that Ms. Miller? I can't tell.
No, I think that's.
No.
Anthony, can you email me the link and I can email it to Lori?
Yes.
Thank you. Will you ever check her email when I forward it to her?
Mr. Chair.
That's a.
Since we're waiting, would you, would you object if I asked the gentleman who spoke during public comment a question?
Someone, everyone else came with it?
Mike, I was just curious while you were talking, is there any possible future of multi-modal port use where, you know, for instance, you could have a ocean-going freighter pull up and unload cargo and, you know, the cargo containers to have them hauled away? Or is that just not something we could envision?
No, it's absolutely part of our projection. And even if the time is not now, there might be certain specialized bulk cargoes. But it's built so the port, and I can share the drawings with you, so that we can handle products like that. And there's a gentleman named Paul Lemire from the Port of Monroe that's done an amazing job with these ports. And he's in strong support of our project, because he would like aggregates from us. And he's helping to, to discuss that. And we would be open. We would like this to be used as, for public use, as an important export dock.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thanks for questioning.
What did Robert Truel say about this? We can't really go and come.
Um, I think that personally, I think you could what would you call, you would not, you would just put on hold the public comment, come back to it. I don't see a reason why you couldn't.
Say motion on that, then?
Yeah, what would you call it, though? I'm trying to think of the right word.
It's not table.
Motion is set aside public comment?
All right, we're just.
Until the computers.
We're just, I tell you what, why don't I make a motion that we, that we close public comment for the moment. But we will reopen it later in the meeting for anyone who didn't have the opportunity.
Most important, motion support to.
Oh, oh, wait, she's here.
Oh.
Well, I withdraw my motion.
I support. Me technology, great.
Okay, do we have audio?
Did you want to talk, Lori? There, look, everybody's here.
I'm still not hearing anything, though.
Who do you want me to unmute, Commissioner?
Lori, or?
Okay, Lori's talking. Do Lori on top.
There, okay. Yeah, the whole test to unmute, unmute us. I think Phyllis is trying to get on, too. Thanks, thank you, Kelly, for sending us a new link. It wasn't us this time. Is it public comment? Because we don't know where we're. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I just, I wanted to thank Damon for coming to the April eighth UPTA meeting. And then on April ninth, there was an article in the newspaper, which I had emailed all of you about. Because the newspaper reporter got it wrong, that you didn't have Zoom meetings. So obviously, you do. But in that article, the director of UPTA said that he's providing reasonable transportation. And if you recall, the Articles of Incorporation that were done forty-four years ago, Chippewa County Commissioners at the time and Lewis County Commissioners charged UPTA with providing essential transportation. There is, there is a huge difference. Reasonable transportation talks about sound judgment, logical. And if anybody thinks a seven PM curfew in the summertime is logical, I disagree, I guess, respectfully disagree. Essential transportation is something that's absolutely necessary, indispensable. People being able to work, education, healthcare, family, those are all indispensable, in our opinion. So I just wanted to remind you of that. And I still think it comes down to the commissioners and choosing the UPTA board members. So I'd still like to see a evaluation system that somehow, you did set precedent a few years ago by removing a board member. And that, that board member was actually helping us. But he apparently got too boisterous for, for some people. So I still would like to see something done differently with the selection of the UPTA board members and the evaluation of the UPTA board members. So the new one is doing a good job, though. So I thank you for that. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Commissioner, you have Phyllis.
Yep, she got her hand up, but no voice.
Hello, are you here?
There we go.
Oh, hi. Thank you. I appreciate letting this county commissioners meeting. I wanted, my husband didn't know what I was doing. He was checking to see if it was one of my family members. I really appreciate so much that you do have Zoom and that you try to be as transparent as possible. I can't tell you how important that is. And I wanted to encourage you, if you would, to please read the UPTA Board Meeting Minutes every month, because we asked them at the last board meeting if they would. Sometimes they put in the people who ask questions during public comment, but they never put down what our comment is. And recently, I sent a letter to Mr. Pramsky, asking if we could please discuss it further. And he said, no, my only, he didn't want to talk to us, only that we could make comment during public comment. But if you never see the Board Meeting Minutes, and if they never put down our public comments, how do you ever know what we're saying? So it's like putting us on mute constantly. And we're not, we are not trying to be difficult people. We're fighting for the, the life of our island, because we are. We recently had people that have moved here, bought property to retire here, and now they don't think they can because of the restrictive schedule. We've had people that have bought property to come visit and can't get up to it. And, and we're not just a summer island, though. We are winter people that want a life. And I really appreciate you understanding that and appreciating you listening. About it. Just encourage you to please read the Board Meeting Minutes and notice whether or not there's public comment in there as mentioned, because it's not been mentioned before. And maybe we did ask them to start writing down comments, and I'm hoping that they'll do that. So that was all I wanted to say, was thank you, and I hope you could read the meeting minutes from UPTA.
Thank you. And if we don't see, both have a blessed Easter. Thanks. Anymore?
Commissioner.
Public comment? Yes, Anthony?
We have Louis V. He wants to say a public comment.
Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, this is Louis Balance. I'm calling, looking at you from Sheboygan, Michigan. I sent you guys a email for a letter of support for bringing Amtrak to Sault Ste. Marines sending this and all that. If I can potentially get the county board's support in getting the Amtrak service going to, it would go to Milwaukee, like the Indian Trail buses right now through Escanaba. It would be great to get support just as a basic level right now to gather the necessary support in order to bring this Amtrak service to the area using the CN line that is currently in existence. So if we can get the Chippewa County Board of Commissioners on board with getting, sending a resolution to me, so I can get that to MDOT and WestDOT. So we can get a rail line, Amtrak rail line to the area for economic development, as well as, you know, equal access to the transportation network in the, in the nation. So I'm just asking for your, to get a resolution of support for bringing Amtrak to your area from, you know, to go to Milwaukee.
Thank you.
Would you be interested in entertaining that resolution?
I'm sure we'll discuss it at the end of the meeting.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
It's not something we do during public comment, but we can talk about it more at the end of the meeting.
Yeah. Thank you. That sounds very intriguing. This is a busy meeting with new stuff.
Somebody has their hand up again.
Commissioner. Lori Miller has her hand up again.
Okay. Good, Ms. Miller.
I didn't know if I used all my time, but I just forgot one thing to mention. And while it's all fresh in our minds, the ice storms in lower Michigan and Mackinac County and lower, upper Michigan, I should say, and Mackinac County. Don't forget that we are under a two-hour fix-it-or-leave-it rule with Cloverland. They want to stay. They have typically stayed all night and worked on our power outages that were emergencies. And they are no longer allowed to do that after hours. So imagine telling the people in Gaylord that, that they had line workers there at nighttime, but they could only work two hours. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anymore public comment? I'm once going twice. Declare public comment closed. Administrator Report, page eleven.
Just the regular month reports, nothing out of ordinary. Senior Services does have some additional information, more than just the report. They have a newsletter in there. And I also sent you guys an email yesterday regarding Head Start, that there was some important information in there, because Head Start did not make the first draft of next year's budget. They have enough money to run through October thirty-first of this year for Head Start. But they're hopeful that in the next couple drafts, that comes back in at the federal level.
We need, we don't need. No, 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 I'm just. Just bothersome. There's not a whole lot of projects in our federal government that work, but Head Start is one of them. Upwards and upwards. New business, Chippewa County, EDC, one board member appointment due to vacancy expires three thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. Page thirty-two, Mr. Panachi, Mr. Ellis, Mr. Srock. His votes. One second. Any discussion? Because it's a roll call, though. So no discussion. All right, then I guess we're gonna go to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Nepper.
I just wanted to say I appreciate all, all three candidates. I know a couple have been, a couple of them have been on the list for a few rounds. And I, I think Tim Ellis has been around for a couple of rounds, or at least the last one. And I appreciate his work in the community, so I'd like to nominate Tim Ellis for the EDC board.
Commissioner Lorenz.
Tim Ellis, please.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Tim Ellis.
Commissioner Trainer.
Tim Ellis.
Chairman Martin.
Tim Ellis. And give him thanks. Panachi and Mr. Srock for applying, and hopefully they will continue to apply for positions. They both have great qualifications and a great history in our community. Building code, speaking of which, building code appeals member appointment, do that by unanimous consent?
I'll move by unanimous consent that we place Mr. Srock on the Building Board of Appeals. I support.
And.
Voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Srock is in building code. Opened settlement steering committee applications, page thirty-five. This roll caller or motion?
Just a motion to accept them, and then they lay on the table for the month.
All right, so we'll need motion and support.
I'll make a motion to accept the sixteen members. Steering Committee list advocates.
Support. Motion and support to accept the sixteen possible citizens and helping with the open settlement monitors. We have to set those on the table for a month. Which we will do, and we will pick this up then. Yes, sir.
Well, I guess a point of information, I didn't realize my name is on the list. Is that all right, that I make the motion?
Yeah, probably better if you didn't.
Oh.
We can just withdraw.
Well, withdraw the motion.
And I will draw my support.
Now I'll make a motion to accept the sleek.
No support.
Motion and support.
Do we, I would say, do we vote on it? The first one? Good, okay, good.
All right, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass. Resolution two oh two five dash oh four, Police Week, page thirty-seven, your packet. Recognition of those that protect us. I've been in motion, it's gonna say, motion. For and support to declare May eleventh through seventeen, twenty twenty-five is Police Week in Chippewa County, Michigan. Any discussion? Roll call vote on this, please.
Commissioner Nepper.
Yes.
Commissioner Lorenz.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five, National Public Safety Telecommunication Communicators Week, page thirty-nine.
I'll move the resolution. I'll support it.
I will. As we say, we, we got a lesson in the last thirty days of conference. All this infrastructure, these people are the ice storm. We got off easy.
Oh, you're not kidding. I drove through Gaylord, holy cow. It's a, it's a mess. It still is.
Yeah, bar. Yesterday, we were supposed to be in Gaylord for track meet.
Yeah.
That's all. It's a mess. All right, anymore discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nepper.
Yes.
Commissioner Lorenz.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next, Standing Committee Reports, Personalization, Transportation, Health, and Social Services Committee, Commissioner Lorenz. Stage is yours.
All right, Committee met April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, members present, Damon Lorenz, Justin Nepper, and Scott Shackleton. Dulcie Ranta and Kelly Church were also present. The agenda was moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Nepper, a nice move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes.
There were no public comments offered. We spoke about the mental equalization, milages, and property values. And it was moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Nepper, that the twenty twenty-five equalized and certified values, tentative taxable values presented by Director Ranta be approved as reported in all state-required forms regarding same be completed and filed as required by statute and to establish a truth and taxation public hearing for June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, meeting of the County Board. On the voice voice, the motion carried and I so moved.
Support.
Motion and support for truth and taxation public care. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passes.
Meeting was adjourned at eleven thirty-two AM with no committee or chairman's comments. And I move that except to report as read.
That's all right.
Close enough.
Thanks.
And I support that.
Motion and support for comments or lack thereof, and adjournment at eleven thirty-two. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion pass. Next. Finance claims account, Commissioner Shackleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on April 15th at 4:30 PM. This was a long meeting, so this will be a long report, so buckle up. We had a quorum present, including myself, Justin Nepper, Damon Lawrence, Jim Trainer, and Jim Martin, others present were Karen Senkus, Doug Welton, Ken Talzma, Katie Bowers, and Kelly Church. We approved the agenda and moved into the said agenda, the first part being the Health Department. We heard the audit presentation and approval of the presentation and audit from Anderson Tackman and Company, Ken Talzma. He provided the audit information. He indicated that we have a unmodified, clean audit. That's a very good thing. The Health Department did show a loss of $871,600. That's a bad thing, leaving the unrestricted fund balance of $348,981. That was largely the result of winding down the home health program. He spoke about that and the fund balance, and thanked everyone who was so helpful in preparing that audit. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Nepper, to approve the Health Department audit as presented and to publish and release where necessary. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move. Support.
And support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
The next item is still under the Health Department, and they have some advertising of certain programs, and these are for contracts for that advertising. Lamar billboards, family planning, $20,000. Lamar billboards, medical marijuana, $3,200. LSSU dasher board, family planning, $4,400. Sovereign Communications, radio advertising for family planning, $15,000. Note right away that those are all grant funded. The committee reviewed the advertising and the contracts, and it was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin, to approve and authorize the advertising media contracts as I previously read. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion about the advertising? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Staying with the Health Department, we had an independent contractor provider agreement for MIHP. The committee reviewed the independent contractor agreement between the county and Lisa Tapetro effective April 1st to June 30th, or until a permanent social worker is hired. Services for that maternal infant health program will be charged at $75 per visit performed and paid monthly. It was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Lawrence, to approve and authorize the agreement, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support. The independent contractor position. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Again, with the Health Department is a Bill Abilita. Is that right? I mean, it's a funny looking name. A built-to-retainer agreement. This is a renewal for telecommunications services, 24 months, $375 a month for the one-year auto renewal. And this company goes through all the telecommunications billings and everything we have, which is a lot, and they save us, they dig and save us money. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin, to approve and authorize the agreement for the 24 months with an automatic 12-month renewal. Yep. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion on the Abilita retainer? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Again, the Health Department, we have a Bright Tree access to home health patient files. We're going to pay them $2,250 for the first year. We reviewed the Bright Tree agreement to maintain the home health and hospice patient files for the Health Department as required for seven-year, with the seven-year plan, additional annual payments being $3,500. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper, to approve and authorize that, it's a typo in the motion, but it's a... Yeah. Well, okay, I'll just, I'll just do it without reading it. To approve the agreement with Bright Tree for, for at least the first year of $2,250. Voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Does that motion work? Okay. Okay. Health Department, again authorized to move the bank accounts to the county EIN, which is the employee or identification number. The committee reviewed the request from Health Department Administration to move the Central Savings Bank accounts to the county EIN to help transition. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin, to authorize that in a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support. Basically streamlined banking and... Moving them under our umbrella, so to speak. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Last one from the Health Department is a request from Health Officer Karen Senkus to reduce the food license fees for the Sioux area public schools because of the upcoming closure of Washington and Lincoln Elementary Schools. It was, pardon me, it was moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Trainer, to approve and authorize the food license reduction to $71 each, so they continue to serve school, serve food through the end of the school year. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Motion and support to really prorate Washington Elementary Schools. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Under the Public Defender's Office, there's an addendum to legal services agreements from, this is retroactively because it was correcting an error. The, basically, we are changing the rate from 130 to 135 and paying the retroactively and fixing that for, for good. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer, to approve and authorize the addendum to contracts held by Fred Filipe, Brian Block, Sarka, Chad Peltier, and Gretchen Stinkwitz for indigent felony cases to meet the MIDC standard eight paid at 135. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support to... Try to think a way to put this. Pay them the correct amount per hour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Under friend of the court, there's a master services agreement increase and approval from $1.40 per sheet to $2 for the Title IV D Cooperative Reimbursement Program. That is a contract with MGT Impact Solutions and the county. They provide all that paperwork copying for funding, and it's funded from the Office of Child Support. The increase of price per scan time sheet will be increasing to $2. The state of work will be effective April 1st, 2025. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin, to approve and authorize that agreement, and on a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support for the Title IV D Cooperative Reimbursement Program. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
And under friend of the court, the committee reviewed a memo from friend of the court, Liz Chambers. Following a recent audit, they are required to buy a fancy new crosscut shredder to meet the required specifications. We have one at Sioux Printing that meets the spec and costs $1,890, and will make the necessary budget amendment. It was moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Trainer, to go ahead and make that purchase. On a voice vote, the motion carried.
Support. Motion and support for a high-tech, high-security shredder.
You didn't make the motion.
I did, I made the motion. What do you read the minutes usually just bang up?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
I did say that, didn't I? Okay. There's a lot here, it's easy to get lost. Okay, next is under the Office of Emergency Services. The committee reviewed the packet from Director Postma regarding the National Hazards Mitigation Plan Grant. FEMA requires state, local, tribal, and territorial governments to have approved and adopt hazard mitigation plans to remain eligible for certain types of non-emergency disaster assistance. Jurisdictions must update the plans and resubmit to FEMA for approval every five years. The current project is budgeted to cost approximately $80,538. Director Postma is seeking a FEMA HMP grant to cover up to $50,000 with a 25% match through expenditure or in-kind hour match. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Lawrence, to approve and authorize the chairman's signature for SF424B, and authorize seeking that FEMA grant to help cover the cost of this mitigation plan. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support for SF424B and the FEMA grant. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Next is Office of Emergency Services. The committee reviewed a one-year renewal from absolute net motion to provide first responders to connect to lean and additional servers remotely at the cost of $7,200. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper, to approve and authorize the one-year renewal for absolute net motion software. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Next is from the Sheriff's Department. The committee reviewed a request to purchase a 2024 Chevy Silverado Police Package Patrol Vehicle. Total cost, $70,000, to be paid with Stone Garden monies. The purchase has, this purchase has been authorized at the state and federal level, including the purchase of the vehicle and upfitting of the vehicle, the emergency lights, radio, and emergency equipment. The request asked that the committee waive the county purchasing policy due to the vehicle's availability and the prior Stone Garden approval. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin, to approve and authorize the Stone Garden purchase of $70,000 to include the vehicle and upfitting, and to waive the county's purchasing policy. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support for a new police car. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Sheriff's Office, the committee reviewed a quote from Johnson Control to clean up the old wiring for the detention controls, extend wires, use connectors, terminal blocks to eliminate loose connections. This is some infrastructure that needs to, needs attention. The Building and Grounds Committee did a walkthrough through the Sheriff's Office to review the access control boards about a month or two ago. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer, to approve the proposal and service agreement to clean up the old wiring, and on a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
From the animal shelter, the committee reviewed a request from shelter manager Holly Henderson to purchase a new record system software called Pet Point. It has better capabilities, including storing vaccine and health reports, along with in-house surgeries, and has mobile software that can be integrated into the animal-controlled vehicle. The cost of the software is $3,000, and to add to the vehicle, an additional $2,075 plus mobile internet at approximately $515 per year. It was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Trainer, to approve and authorize the purchase of the new Pet Point software record system. On a voice vote, the motion carried. Oh, and I would so move, sorry.
Support. Motion and support for Pet Point software record system. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
The next item is to approve the county cyber incident response plan. That provides a framework for the county response to a cyber incident. Once approved, there will be training for each role to ensure that everyone has the required knowledge to effectively respond, mitigate, and recover from a cyber incident. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin, to approve the cyber incident response plan. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support for cyber incident response plan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Under Information Systems, the committee reviewed a request for proposal bid summary for 23 desktop computers, a, the rally bar, which is a, what do you call that, like a telecom room? Multi. Sorry.
Yeah.
Or the Polycom.
Polycom, thank you. The updated new, new type of Polycom, on the IBM Power S1014 system. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin, to approve and authorize the low bidders for the 23 desktop computers. Total price, $24,954.63 from Dell. $5,237 to Tech Advanced Computer for the two rally bars, and the low bid from innovative technology for the IBM S1014 system at $50,331.79. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support for 23 desktop computers and more. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Again, under Information Systems, the committee was updated on the central dispatch electricity upgrade and virtual machine server request for proposals that were previously released. For the electrical upgrade, no bids were received either time. It was released, and the virtual machine server request had an addendum during the process, which then Information Systems didn't feel like the quotes were comparable. So it was moved by Commissioner, Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Martin, to seek quotes for the central dispatch electricity upgrade and nullify the virtual machine server request for proposal. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support for central dispatch, dispatch electric upgrade. I guess we're going to re-get it. Any other discussion?
I think the, well, one of them, at least, I could re-bid you, you're having them come and give you a price. So it's slightly different, same quotes instead of bid. Yeah, right. I just want to be clear on that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Let's see, we next, under Information Systems, again, reviewed the updated request for proposal central server for release. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper, to approve the central server request for proposal to be released. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support. Those are the central server. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Under administration, we had some policies. The committee reviewed two policy updates and one new policy. The updated policy is number 505, agency provided telephones, laptops, tablets, added numbers eight and nine regarding installing mobile device solutions, and updated the county's public statement rules, which eliminated the 15 minutes per topic. And they reviewed the new policy number 2323 for cash and check handling. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper, to approve the updated policies that I just mentioned, as presented, and on a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
On this next one, this is administration letter of support for House Resolution 30 Gray Wolves. I was trying to debate whether, in my head, whether we actually need to do this one or just go over it, but I think we just go ahead and do it again. I was trying to debate whether in my head, whether we actually need to do this one or just go over it, but I think we just go ahead and do it again. Okay, so the let's see, the committee reviewed a draft letter for support of House Concurrent Resolution number thirty regarding the U S Department of Interior's prior removal of the gray wolf from the endangered species list. The resolution is being sponsored by Representative Fairbairn and would urge the federal government to de-list the gray wolf. So the state of Michigan Department of Natural Resources would oversee and manage the population. Discussion ensued regarding the pros and cons. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve and authorize signature for that letter of support. On a voice vote, the motion carried and I would so move. Support.
Motion and support.
Any discussion? I guess I just did have one item of discussion that kind of goes with what Phil- Phyllis mentioned on TV and I'm just noticing. I know you were opposed to this, not to speak for you, but is it appropriate and to make sure that when that when we list, you know, motions carrying that we identified that there were certain, you know, that whether it was unanimous or not, or whether there was. I suppose that would be up to the individual.
Well, I think when we take our vote on this. That will happen.
What?
I I missed that.
Okay, okay.
I usually put it down there for one.
As far as this vote, I think we're just voting on accepting the action of the committee, not necessarily what the actual committee act, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, we we already did it, right? But I think the proper way is just go ahead and vote on it again. But yeah, you're you're right and you're right. She normally would have that it passed with with Commissioner Martin, but no.
And in general, the 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 finance committee minutes of at the end, we would vote to to make any corrections to the minutes, but okay.
Oh, yeah.
I think the way this will probably work is I'll ask for all those in favor of the legislative support for gray wolves.
Understood.
And you four.
Yeah.
If you haven't changed your mind.
Right.
And I'll do my one and.
And this time she'll make sure she.
On we go.
Makes notation of it.
Right. All those in favor? Of House Resolution thirty concerning gray wolves signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
That passes. Yeah, so then we move to finance claims and accounts. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to recommend the approval of the March County Bills and Payroll General Claims, three hundred sixty-one thousand two hundred and three and ninety-two cents. Other fund claims, eight hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred thirty-seven and sixty-five cents. Payroll of six hundred nine thousand nine hundred seventy-nine and fifty-three cents. And Health Department Claims, two hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred ninety-seven and fifty-nine cents. And payroll, sixty thousand six sixty-two and four cents. Total claims, two million sixty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-three cents on a voice vote, the motion carried now and so move.
Support. Motion and support to pay bills. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I I.
Post, much your best.
We went to committee comments. Commissioner Nepper addressed the committee on waiving the purchasing policy. Discussion followed regarding vehicles and attempting to purchase them locally. Chairman comments, there were no comments. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence and supported by Commissioner Trainer to adjourn and the meeting adjourned at five twenty-one P M. So in the interest of streamlining this, I'll make the motion that the meeting minutes of finance claims and accounts be accepted with the one change of notation of Commissioner Martin's dissent on the House Resolution thirty vote.
And if we can also add the correction on the Health Department contract, right, mentioning the Dota agreement as a misspelling.
Oh, yeah.
Or a misprint.
I have it.
Okay, yeah, that's a that was a typo really. Yeah.
I was trying to.
He did a little, he did a little copy and paste.
Well, I I was trying to smart you guys and I thought you could put those two together and then when we went back, I forgot to separate them.
Okay, but but we'll certainly, that'll be included as a as a fix. And that would be my motion now.
Support. Motion and support to accept a very lengthy finance claims account meeting minutes of April fifteenth. Thank you. Karen, that was very well done.
Thanks a lot.
All those in favor? I I. Post, much your best. So we're back to there both missions packet. Commissioners report on meetings for representatives and general habits.
I I have one. I I got to go to my first substance use disorder meeting yesterday. One of the things that came out about it, what they're what they're and this is works well. It's kind of dovetails in with our with the with the opioid committee reforming here. They they have a lot of resources, but I would encourage our committee to work with them. They are, they are firing a program and they're they're pushing for post care of of not just opioids, but all kinds of substance use, but they they recognize there's a deficiency in getting people back into mainstream. And and it's a challenge for them and they are, they are doing some extra work there and I really would would encourage you. Whoever gets on that committee to seek out their help and cooperation.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I just, I guess, two, two things that were brought up. First of all, I was very excited to hear about the Corey project. So thank you for sharing that in person. I know I've talked on the phone, but just wanted to say thank you for being here and talking about your investment. And then secondly, the Head Start funding. I live literally half block up from Head Start. Every single morning I see the kids getting off the bus for over ten years now. You know, watched kind of walked, walked through there on my way to work or wherever and you know, generally, I think it's been a very well-run program and takes care of a lot of local people that don't have too many other options. And of course, we know the government, I think statewide and nationally have been trying to work on helping more daycares get launched and various things like that. But I guess I was just wondering, do we have any have? Have we talked about any action items that this commission would want to take on that? Or is that something that will be coming up? I know that I don't think there was any resolutions or requests to Congressman Bergman's office to look at it more closely or anything like that yet. But that's something that I personally would like to I guess, look into just to make sure that we are thoughtfully letting them know what's happening in our county regarding our Head Start programs.
The well, I I would just note on that, it's it's a long process. I mean, really, the what what happened is the administration sent down a as I understand it anyway, the the administration sent down a proposed budget to Congress. And of course, those usually the final result that looks very little like what came from the administration, both at the state and the federal level, you know, so so it's the beginning of a process, but I I understand your concern. I I don't even want to mention it. I alluded to it a minute ago is that we really dodged a bullet on that ice storm. I I had to drive to Traverse City. By the time I got to Traverse City, they had nothing. When I left here, we had nothing, but in between, boy, it's a mess. And even when you, even when they have and they they pretty much have, everybody hooked up the power again, there is still so much cleanup. There are trees down everywhere, right, right next to I seventy-five, you know, for instance, you that that they need to get in there and clean it all up. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that I'm I was I feel bad for them and I feel fortunate for us that that we dodged that bullet.
Go ahead. I'd like to, thanks, Mr. Weber, for coming into Chippewa County and putting his faith into this area. Hopefully, we can get the employees for you that you're going to need to go on with the project. It's supported in the whole.
We can just follow up on that? So so he mentioned a letter of support or something like that. Whoever are we addressing layer of support to the state or or what exactly do we need here to support?
It will go to a gentleman named Moreland who's in charge of the Fort Infrastructure Development Program. With Marad, the Department of Transportation.
Gotcha. Okay, so our our legislative legislators representing Chippewa County could also be helpful in voicing support that we could address that too as well. Have Kelly, have you been working with this gentleman at all on this?
I, Mr. Trainer, just emailed and I had, I don't have a copy of that letter of support, but I can certainly.
So so the next way this would probably go is Kelly being the administrator for the county would prepare something like that and would give it to us to consider for support. But I would echo my thanks that or the thanks that was expressed for looking to invest in our county, you know, it sounds like some a very good project.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No, I would just add, I believe Chris Olson with our E D C in Chippewa County, E D C is aware of the project since perhaps chatted with you here and there or not sure how much, but will encourage them to continue to work with you. If I could add one other topic for anybody else is I know we promised the fellow that Mr. Balance that we would mention Amtrak before the end of the meeting.
Oh.
I would just say I it it's a it's difficult to believe that Amtrak would do that just to be, I guess, straight up honest in my mind because of the passenger counts and all that, but I do would love to see a train resident, you know, what's that called? If people, people be able to take the train to Milwaukee, I I when I was a kid, I my grandpa took me to Amtrak to ride Milwaukee to Green Bay because there was drove from the U P to Milwaukee just to ride the Amtrak for two hours to get the experience. So you know, it's it would be great to see trains in more places. I I would like to hear more about whether or not it's just kind of a shot in the dark, sending in letters to Amtrak or you know, something maybe more official. I don't know if Mr. Balance could provide us more information on his campaign. But that's kind of my thoughts on it.
And that this is something really too that we could go to Representative Fairbairn on because the funding to a large degree is subsidized by the state of Michigan transportation budget. So you're not going to get a new Amtrak route without M dot supporting and supporting it financially. I believe in any case, because when I mean, I chaired that budget for for two to four years, I forget which. And Amtrak was an important part of the transportation budget. It's it's not all federal. You know, because Amtrak is, of course, a federal line, but there's state funding that subsidizes the the lines in the state of Michigan. So I think if we went to Representative Fairbairn, he could give us some indication whether the state of Michigan is even interested in participating in something like that.
In this fall, I saw nine and ten, something about Amtrak going all the way to Trap City, Michigan, one thirty-one corridor. They're looking at best case scenario, like twenty thirty-two. This is not something that's going to happen quickly. I I would love to see it'd be great.
Yeah, it would be really cool.
But it it's gonna be, I would guess, probably a decade. I mean, this is gonna move slowly unless the right people are involved.
Well, there's actually an additional issue that freight tracks aren't always quite up to the standards that you want for passenger rail. And it's a pretty bumpy, could be a pretty bumpy ride on an Amtrak train if you're just on old freight tracks. So usually what they do is they try to do some upgrades to to make, improve the quality of the run. But but again, the idea of it sounds really neat and Lord knows historically, we used to have a train service. I remember the old train depot down there by on Portage. It's a shame they knocked it down. We had a beautiful old train depot down there, but it was down where the ICE building is now.
Yeah, immigration.
Yeah.
Okay, because I know there's also was a depot right where Sioux Motors used to be, a big white building.
Sioux Motors used to be. Oh, okay.
That's why the doors are up so high.
Because was that for the car, for the tree cars or was that for the?
That's where my my wife's grandfather, that's he headed to Europe.
Oh, is that right?
And that was, that was where Grandma saw him off. Okay, was there. But, yeah.
Just to be a complete jerk, if we combined Amtrak with the Nevis Island issue, maybe we could solve.
Vessel. Oh, vessel.
Is that a?
Linda can hit me for that.
Yeah, I I will also echo Mr. Weber. Thank you. We've got so much going on between what's going on at the locks, what's going on down detour, and now this really bodes well. And and those are good paying jobs. And now does that mean, can we get dibs on some of that? So we can fix our roads first and then expand out from succinct burning, if you would. That would be, that would be great. But yeah, and we make sure that, can we get that letter then to our our U S senators and our U S representative and and any anyone that anyone thinks could be a help on this to move it along would be great. Sounds like a very well thought out plan. And be awesome to do that. And I just really upset about what's going on with the Education Department, obviously. I'll be honest with you, if it goes through, my wife will lose her job. And my kids will not be in college because all we get grants because we're too rich. So all we get grants, well, those grants won't be there anymore. What I last heard was they're looking at doing block grants. Which means all the money would then instead of coming from D C, come from Lansing. And I don't know who I trust less. That's the cedendum. Pick your poison, I guess. Because we we tend to be, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Shaq, then the stepchild on the side of the bridge. When it comes to Lansing.
It's not unusual, the the you have, well, we could spend all night on this, but you have a lot more representation in Southern Michigan, especially in Southeast Michigan. And, you know, they tend to think their priorities are bigger than ours.
A hundred percent agree. Anyone else? I'm entertain a motion for motion to adjourn.
I support.
All those in favor? Close, we are adjourned.